The October twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three, Toowleton City Council Work Session. We have three items on the agenda tonight, first being the Stone Ridge Park renovation update, which be led by Rich Mueller. Welcome, Rich.
Welcome, Rich.
Ross in support.
Yeah, I lost my voice cheering punk and paddlers on, so Ross is up here to help me.
Yeah.
Anyway.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councilors. So we are here tonight to talk about Stone Ridge Park and the Stone Ridge Park, the fantastic park serving so many of our residents. And in so many of our residents were involved in the process of imagining what it will become. And so we wanted to give you an update as to the process and talk about next steps and share with you where we're at. So just a quick background, and all of you probably are aware of the park and where we're at. But just really quickly, it was built in the seventies, and it's been a much-loved park. It's not just a park, it's also a corridor, travel corridor for folks. You can see the fence there on the north side of the park, and this acts as the main entryway into the park from the north, from the apartments on the north side. But that road that you see, that access trail road that you see is the corridor to the south. And folks walk through this park to get to the bus and mass transit on Sagert. And so it's a park and that corridor. And so it was named for the subdivision in seventy-seven. And we have, as you're well aware, from your vision goals and from our system plan, this was a high-priority park to redevelop. And so we have worked over the past few years to, one, do a site assessment, really meaningfully engage with our residents. And that was, as you're aware, was done primarily in Spanish, led with Spanish at this site. And we had some great, great ideas produced by our community members. And those ideas are what created the site plan for this park. And so we've got some really exciting things in store for this park and what it will become. You can see some of the notifications that we utilized on the screen and some of the specific flyers we used. Some of these we handed out door-to-door, and we took a different approach at this site. And we had a great turnout, and it was during COVID. So everyone came to the park over a series of days and wore their masks and participated in some really good visioning and idea generation activities. And you can see specifically some of the groups that were involved in that process and some of the virtual focus group meetings we held. It was really enjoyable from the staff, the staff side of it as well. When the children who live in the neighborhood are actively participating and imagining what their park will become, it's pretty rewarding from the staff perspective. And so you can see one of the folks that was involved in that process and drew exactly what she wanted that park to look like. And we get just some great ideas. You can see some of the ideas that came out of that process here. And you're looking at the site plan for the current site plan for the park. One of the things, I mentioned this just a minute ago, is that north-south connector, that corridor from the apartments on the north through the park. This really formalizes that connection. It's not through a broken-down gate anymore. This is an actual trail. And this trail also is, we're designing this trail to be fully accessible. So no matter what your abilities, you can get through this corridor. That's the intent of this design. And connecting people out to Sagert, you'll see, one of the items you'll note on this design as well as the sidewalk actually bumps out in front of the park intentionally. And this came from our community members who expressed an interest and desire to, let's do some things to slow down traffic right in front of the park where we have kiddos playing. And so this is, you're looking at what the future park will become, and Rich is going to dive into some of the details, I think, on the next slide.
Yeah, I'm gonna pick it up from there. Hi, everyone. Rich Mueller. Next steps was informed during the site plan. And you can see the near-term next steps, rename the park, selection of park amenities, and collaborating with our engineering division on street improvements and safety. Midterm funding and all the steps to get to building the park. Then, long-term, no surprise, all those outcomes, the benefits, community benefits, that are gonna really support the neighborhood and community by having improvements in this park. And so with that, we've started, we're gonna present to you tonight the near-term renaming the park. Because in the several years since the concept plan and today, the neighborhood has continued to be engaged in what they want in this space and also what they want the space to be called. And during the master plan and then strongly identified in the site, the concept site plan and report, was the neighborhood doesn't identify with Stone Ridge Park. Many residents, excuse me, many community members believe Stone Ridge Park was Rolling Hills Apartment Playground. And the neighborhood, the ones that knew Stone Ridge Park, it wasn't a positive identification with the park name. And so, perfect time to engage the community, engage the neighborhood in selecting a park name. And again, that was an outcome of the concept plan. And this page is right from the concept plan, right from that basalt creek plan that council accepted. And naming or renaming a recreation facility serves, serving the community matters. It enhances a sense of community and will instill new pride and ownership of a public space that's become associated with negative connotations. So right out of the plan, right from the consultant, as a result of the community engagement. So for the naming, we had over three-hundred-and-fifty people participate in a naming exercise. And this started with a survey for naming ideas during the concept plan development a couple of years ago. And this concluded with National Night Out, August of this year. And so the community and neighborhood were involved in selecting and recommending park names. Those names were taken at Viva and really narrowed down to two names, the most popular names. And out of those two names, the Los Casitas Park and Friendship Park, Los Casitas Park, which the neighbors identify their neighborhood as the Los Casitas neighborhood. That was by far with sixty-three percent of folks desiring to call it Parque Los Casitas or Los Casitas Park. Tells a little bit about the process, narrowing it down. The main outreach this round was during Viva and National Night Out and the preferred name we've just presented you with. So we looked at the naming policy, which is in the Toowleton Municipal Code. And we reviewed it and believe that renaming the park, Parque Los Casitas or Los Casitas Park, complies with and meets the city's naming policy for parks. And I don't know that I'll go through the whole thing, but we did. I do wanna highlight two-year waiting process or policy period from the conceptual plan, when people said we would like a new name, to the actual, well, it'll be more than two years, naming if council chooses to do that. It was evaluated by T-Park, and T-Park recommends to council the change of the name. And it suggested that before or during development, name changes occur, which were right on target for this one, or in construction planning right now, with construction expected to begin in twenty-twenty-four. And the product of a public participation process, I think we well demonstrated that. The first, the concept plan, over seven-hundred-and-fifty people, approximately twenty different engagement opportunities. And the naming suggestions and preferred name to major community events with quite a few people involved as well. So there you have it. I think at this point, we're ready for any questions or discussion. Ross?
Yeah, so thank you for seeing that presentation and hearing us tonight. We know from the robust engagement we did with our community at the site that the site's meaningful. And we are working hard to deliver a brand-new park for the folks at Stone Ridge Park. And so as Rich mentioned, we're in engineering and construction document development stuff right now. And twenty-twenty-four, construction will be underway, which is not too far away. So we are, we're excited for this. And of course, as Rich talked about, the name is really, per ordinance, is back to you at this point to discuss and ask questions. And the name that T-Park is recommending came directly from our community members and then was voted upon by our community members at the series of events that you saw on the screen. Opened any questions or discussions you may have?
I just wanna welcome Council Reyes, who's joining us now via Zoom. Welcome, Council Reyes. Questions? Council Brooks?
Thank you for your presentation and all the work. I think the first time I met Councilor Gonzalez was over at the park and around a Christmas event. And I'm really excited that we're putting a fresh, new base on it, and then to have a name makes a lot of sense. And I've said it before, but I really think that the Parks Department goes above and beyond with community engagement. And I was at the playground equipment choosing over at Affolati. And it's just such a, I know what you're saying when you say it's a blast for the Parks Department, too, to see the kids and see everyone being engaged. So I appreciate it. One thing I had a question about was if the neighborhood identifies, and it's a bigger question than parks, if the neighborhood identifies with this name, is there a way to also start a process for the actual neighborhood itself? Or, you know, if it was called Stone Ridge Neighborhood for so many houses? And if the community doesn't really identify that way? And we're changing the name of the park, would it be something that we could look at for community engagement around the neighborhood as well? Is it like a timely thing to do?
Perhaps. I don't know that it's designated as the Stone Ridge Neighborhood technically anywhere. It was the original subdivision name, but it doesn't have a monument sign, I don't believe, out in front. And I don't think so. And I think it's just been colloquially called that until we got wind that that's not how it's been identified. So I don't think there's any technical documents, though, that identify it as Stone Ridge, the Stone Ridge Neighborhood.
Yeah, so I'm just wondering if there might be a way that they would officially like their neighborhood to be incorporated into this conversation as we're talking about it.
Other questions?
I don't have a question, but I just wanna say thank you for the extraordinary public outreach and listening to the public. And I'm just so glad through this whole process and your prioritization, to me, this park, like, it's like, we have great parks, but we have this little embarrassing one. And so it's so nice that your whole process worked and rose to the top of important projects. So thank you very much.
Questions for comments? Council Gonzalez?
This is a very exciting time for me as well, because I've come into the very last component of this. So don't let it take a lot of credit for all this, but it's super exciting as a resident of Toowleton to see our taxpayers at work. So much excitement in your voice around this parks. It is a happy, happy time. And so I just wanna join you on that glee and happiness. So thank you so much for all this time and the outreach you guys have done. It's phenomenal. I was there playing Santa Claus at Stone Ridge. That's how we met. And I, quite frankly, did not even know where Stone Ridge was located. I thought, like you had said, it's something to do with church or something like that. I had no idea it's ever been there. So having Las Casitas and a park all kind of married together is just gonna be wonderful. So thank you.
Other questions or comments? Okay, Council Reyes?
Yeah, thank you very much for this. I actually joined specifically because I am excited about this. And I just can't wait to see how things start developing and looking different and just give that to the community that so much, I think deserve it. They give, they work in this community. They live there, and so for me, it's really exciting that this is happening. A quick question. And then I'll get into the name later, but the maintenance of the, like, following up once it gets really nicely done and it's, you know, beautiful, who actually maintains the park or who takes care of it? Because I've seen, I think that's where I feel like a little bit also that we need to think about. And I'm just curious, how often do we take care of the park? Is there's gonna be grass? I just wonder, because I live in a small park area, too, and that park always seems to be taken care of. So I'm wondering if the same attention this new park is gonna have.
Great question, Counselor. So the current park that is known as Stone Ridge Park currently, the infrastructure that's there is, there's really nothing there to maintain. There's some grass. There's an old asphalt path driveway area and the fence. And there's really not much to do to make it look better. And so that's been one of our challenges, is the infrastructure is just so old and falling apart that it's hard to make it look good. And so this, with this new infrastructure, we have staff dedicated to this area. And our Parks Maintenance Staff are well aware and I think our, I think several of our staff that work in this area are excited to see infrastructure that's maintainable and where we can keep it looking nice.
Excellent. Thank you. And of course, I love the name Las Casitas. So I think it will be perfect for the area, for the people that identify living in that community. So I like Las Casitas. So whether it's Las Casitas Park or Parque de Las Casitas, I really doesn't, it's the same thing in my head. Because I just speak both languages, but I like the name. So I am excited about it. Thank you.
The other comments or questions? Dylan, I think, obviously, council's very supportive of the name change. I think getting back to Council Brooks's comment about the neighborhood name, I think as the name takes over, that will just flow through over time. The slowly Stone Ridge will go away, and it'll be known as Las Casitas. It's just a matter of time. There'll probably be a sign on the park. They sell that, you know, and that name will just start following, you know, follow the park over time, and then we'll refer to the area as that. Because I know, like, different areas like Apache Bluff, all the different names were from the developers in town of the different areas, and no one really refers to it like that, except for this neighborhood has a very special name that will take over.
And yes, Mayor, we will have a sign at the park. Yes.
Every other park has one. Yep. All right.
And so what we are hearing from everyone is, what we plan to do is bring back the resolution, the official action at the next council meeting, I believe, is when we're thinking to do that. And at that point, then, per ordinance, which will fall on this case, obviously, we'll ensure that that change takes place. So that would be the official action. So thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming. Ross doesn't get to go for our guest. So the next item on the agenda is the Lake of the Commons Drinking Fountains. If you're not aware of what those are, there's some older water fountains on the Commons that really don't function. One of them was in the middle of the action yesterday, those white glass kind of things. And Ross has a plan to swap them out. So Ross, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councilors. The Lake of the Commons, the Commons area was constructed in the mid-nineties and has been amazing. It's served our community so well for decades. And if you were at the Regatta yesterday or Regatta in the past, it's, all of you have been, it's such a neat gathering space. And as you're also well aware, the infrastructure at the Lake of the Commons is aging. Drinking fountains in particular have around a thirty-year lifespan, if they're kind of a commercial-grade drinking fountain, which we have at the Commons, and they double as art. And so I'll talk just a little bit about and show you some images. These are the drinking fountains the mayor was referring to. And in the nineties, the city recognized that drinking fountains were important at this gathering space and at the same time had a desire to install permanent art at the space. And so the Arts Committee and community members and folks at the Heritage Center, and Ross Baker is here tonight, had really a fantastic effort to figure out what can we represent as a community value at the Commons. And what was decided upon in the nineties was to install, to commission artwork that doubled as drinking fountains to represent the Ice Age history in the community, in our region. And so these are ice, representative of ice-sculpted drinking fountains. And they, at one time, were not yellowed like they are now. They are aged and yellowed. They have, which you'll also, you can't tell too well from these photos, there are cracks all over the blocks of ice, which are actually glass. And so they have been meticulously cared for over the years. And our Parks Maintenance Staff has done an amazing job of keeping them operating, operational, and safe, because they are sharp. And so the cracks you see have been glued together and epoxyed together over the last decades. And every imaginable idea or way to keep these going has been employed. And they are at the point of needing complete replacement. One of them has recently completely failed, the one nearest the splash pad. And so we have, and I'll show you on the next slide, the map. So you'll see the three drinking fountain images and where they're located around the Commons. They are located in areas where our plan is to take, to remove this aging infrastructure that is also art and replace them with new drinking fountains that will last for an additional thirty years. And at the same time, create some consistency and kind of tie together the new Veterans Plaza area with the rest of the site. And so the drinking fountains would be consistent around the Commons. We would install the same style, the same color, same look and feel as the Veterans Plaza area. And so, however, we see this as a fantastic opportunity. And Ross Baker and the Heritage Center and folks there see the value of these drinking fountains as art, as many at the Heritage Center were involved in the commissioning and financial support for the art. What we are proposing is that we remove these three, replace them with brand-new drinking fountains, and take one of these drinking fountains that is still in good enough shape and install it at the Heritage Center. So that this can be a nod to the arts folks in our community that contributed to make this happen. And at the same time that we're still honoring our Ice Age history, which is what the Heritage Center is all about, ensuring that we have that historical tie. Additionally, to the one drinking fountain we would install at the Heritage Center, we have, each drinking fountain has a plaque of the folks that donated funds for that to be purchased by the city. And so we would take those plaques as well, and those would go with the drinking fountain to the Heritage Center. And there's an interpretive sign as well, that anybody could visit at any time. And our city staff would install that drinking fountain at the Heritage Center. So that is our proposal to you at Work Session tonight. And we would love to answer any questions or any concerns, questions that might arise. If this sounds like a plan that makes sense, we would come back to you at a future council meeting with a resolution that would authorize the city to loan one of these in perpetuity to the Heritage Center.
Council Brooks?
Thanks for the good explanation. I wanna also speak, they've talked with the Arts Committee, too, and they're fine with letting go of the drinking fountains. That group's not attached the same, you know, as the people that put them in anymore. But my question was also around design, and I'm just curious, especially because of heat and things like that, if there is any consideration of putting in drinking fountains that you can fill your water bottles at one of them? I know I've sent a picture how they do it in West Lynn, and they even have one that has sparkling water, and it's pretty neat. So I was just curious.
Great question, Counselor. Yes, we absolutely plan to put not only drinking fountain, but also a bottle, a bottle filler.
Oh, awesome. Thank you.
Council Reyes?
Yeah, thank you. I love the idea. I had no idea those were ice, you know, reflecting the Ice Age. I mean, now it makes sense. But I'm looking forward for that, and I was under the same, I was gonna say the same thing as Counselor Brooks about refilling bottles and, or, you know, make it friendly for the environment, but also for animals. And I think you've done that for pets, for dogs. I was at a park in Salem. They had low enough for animals to come, you know, with their people with their pets, and as they walk, enough water for them as well. So is that something in the plans?
Yes, we did also look at that as well. We don't know how, where exactly we would put that, but we were looking at putting one of those at the Commons as well. There's some, just a placement and kind of positioning question around just ADA access. But I think that will probably also work as well, but we haven't quite figured that out yet.
I also like the idea of keeping one for historical purposes. I think that's really important for people to know where our history is, what happened, why we did this. And so I do like the idea. And it just also ties it in a little bit with the Stone Ridge Park historical purposes. So I think keeping that in record and seeing how Toowleton has transformed and changed throughout the years. I think that not forgetting that there was a park there that was called Stone Ridge Park, it's important for fifty, a hundred years from now, when we're not here. That would be also a good idea. It just, it came to me right after we started talking about, when you were talking about the ice thing, that you were gonna keep one for historical purposes. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Council Pratt?
Okay, I'm sometimes too literal, but I think it's great that one of these will go to the Historical Society, but will it be operational? Because it's at the end of its useful life, right?
Yes, yes. So we've had some pretty good discussions internally, and staff are highly confident that they are not maintainable anymore, that if we take, if we try to repair them, they're at the point where they would probably just fall apart.
If Tom can't keep it together, then it's not possible.
And we've had discussions with Ross Baker and Heritage Center, and they're aware that they would not be operational, essentially would act as purely as art.
Okay, that makes sense. I thought you were gonna have it operational there, and I'm like, well, why would it work there and not at the park? So it was a little confusing. No, I think that's great, especially, you know, the Ice Age theme of it. That's great. I guess now it shows what climate change will do with the ice.
Other questions or comments? I've just got two questions, Ross. One, we discussed yesterday, just went past. What's your timeline on this?
So we would like these to be operational in time for warm weather, which is why we are bringing this to you now and not, and why we didn't bring it to you last summer, even though it was still a problem then, is so we would like to get them done before next summer, if that works. And and so either either this spring, winter, spring, or the following in conjunction with Veterans Plaza is sort of how how that will work out.
The second question is in the form of a joke. Is this fountain going to go next to the Paul Henin bench? Since Paul Henin was probably around for this water fountain? All right. So the city has directed it goes here. All right, great. Any other questions for Ross? All right. Well, thank you, Ross. Sounds like we're we're fine with it.
Thank you. We'll bring your resolution back at the next meeting.
All right, that brings us to Council Roundtable. Any questions on the items on consent tonight? Any concerns? All right, I got Counsel Sacco will be doing the pledge tonight. With that, we'll go ahead and I don't believe we have any proclamations or anything we have to assign correct. It's pretty bare bones. You gotta listen to Don. Okay. He just walked out. I got my job, you know, got my jab in. All right, with that, we'll go ahead and start the Council Roundtable. I'll start with Counselor Sacco. Since she's so close then. All right, Counselor Gonzalez.
Thank you. I don't have anything in the report other than the Regatta was phenomenal. Thank you.
Counsel Brooks.
I met with the Arts Committee. We, I think there'll be a presentation. But I just want to remind people that anyone can nominate someone for being recognized as a art contributor to our community. And we have an award for that, which kind of went a little quiet during COVID. So we're bringing it back and like I said, anyone on council, anyone in the community, it doesn't have to just come from the Arts Committee. So if you have somebody that fits, the other thing that is going on with the Arts Committee is we're down to the three top finalists for the Veterans Plaza. So we're excited about that. And we also with the PAB, I met and we were got the presentations for the home grant and so I was busy scoring those. And finally, we had a bus tour last, I want to say Thursday, maybe Wednesday, with the PAB that was put on by the Fair Housing Council of Oregon that talked about housing inequity and the historical history that, speaking of history, that we have in Oregon, in Portland, we drove to all these different sites and met people that were impacted. A gentleman that lived in Banport and a woman whose parents were part of what they call concentration camps for Japanese that we a lot of times refer to as internment camps. It it was really chock full of information. So if anyone's interested, you can sign up for those, those bus tours, something like a rocky ride for the Fair Housing Council of Oregon. Thanks.
Counsel President Pratt.
I went to Martinelli Wood CIO meeting, which was very interesting and it was kind of fun to see my neighbors out in darker weather. And then he went to the C four Metro Subcommittee meeting and we talked about high capacity transit and the thing that really came under that was Dwight Bashir, who runs the smart program in Wilsonville, really called out that the funding seems to keep going to the lines and areas where there's already existing. And if, we just had that map up a meeting ago, I think, and it's like climate lines, us, and it's blank. So he really called out that it's, it appears that their intent is to keep funding what exists instead of creating it down here where it's needed, which was good for us. And then the C four tolling strategy Subcommittee. Oh, just this, they talked about the Special Legislative Subcommittee that they will be, they're doing this roadshow thing where they're going to have ten meetings, three of them will be in the metro area. And we mostly discussed how it's important that I mean, we're all kind of on the same page on the issues, like the need for the third lane and I two oh five, the diversion issues and that. People show up and express our concern. So they hear it because a lot of these people don't even live in the metro area. I think we have one person that's even affected by the tolling on I two oh five. So it's really important that they hear what's going on. And then Rory, Vila Staski, did I say it right? I'm not going to call him here Rory forever. Anyway, he talked about the survey that we talked about at the last meeting and there was a lot of input on being careful to not make the questions biased and and to even include, you know, input on what other types of funding people would be willing to support. So that was that. And then finally, of course, one to Regatta yesterday, I have to do a special call to the chief for calling things for me. So, thank you.
All right, since we last met, went to the League of Cities, League of Oregon Cities Conference. I will be discussing that a little bit more during the regular city council meeting about the award we received. Attended Vine to Wine. What was interesting there was they, one, they sold out, which I was, you know, very happy for them. And two, the amount of people had never stepped foot in the teen room. Because what they did this year is they had speakers who were authors, regular authors and child book authors, which was fascinating to listen to them, how they write, you know, child books. And I was sitting there and most people were like, I've never been in this room. This is a cool room. What is it used for? So library staff, Jerry Ann and crew had the opportunity to explain what the room is used for, which was great. On the sixteenth was the Washington County Coordinating Committee meeting. The major subject was the low income tolling program. ODOT has put out that it's generally accepted that they're going to do subsidize, some kind of subsidized tolling for folks who make less than two hundred percent of federal median income for the area. Most mayors and the Washington County Commissioners feel that four hundred percent is more a better goal to reach because two hundred percent, you're just barely scratching the surface in Washington County and in the metro area. Four hundred percent, you're still not there, but pretty close. That's about a hundred and six thousand for a family of four. So the Washington County Coordinating Committee agreed to send a letter to ODOT in support of one, saying, one, we still don't support tolling, but if we have to, that that we would recommend that the low income tolling program allow folks up to four hundred percent federal median income be allowed to enroll in this program. And then we're starting to plan the Washington County Coordinating Retreat, where the major subject of discussion will be misstep and where misstep is going to be going forward, given the county's budget woes. Later in that afternoon was the Washington County Chair meeting with mayors. The number one topic of that was public safety. The Board of Commissioners got the presentation from District Attorney Barton and Sheriff Garrett. As, just as the mayors were, they are very concerned at the status of our public safety and the jail. So they're going to be working with the Sheriff's Department DA's office. They envisioned doing a series of town halls throughout the Washington County and coming to city council meetings to lay out their plan on how to get out of this hole. They also are now beginning the planning of the public safety levy and library levy, which expire in twenty twenty six. They wouldn't get in front of that, knowing that both of those levies are probably going to have to ask for additional funds. Because especially the library levy is keeping up with inflation. And specifically, the Mayor Sherwood related the, you know, problem they're having in the Sherwood Library of increasing costs and not keeping up with what they're getting from Washington County for their library. So keep, I keep my ears open for that because that's going to be a tough one for the Commissioners, given again, with their budget situation. They've got the library to deal with, public safety and transportation issues, all costing more money and less revenue coming in. The GPI Green Portland Board Meeting was held on the eighteenth. Port metro area is starting to get some wins on attracting some corporations, businesses, manufacturing industrial companies coming to the Portland metro area. Interest is increasing. Where the major effort by GPI to start reforming Portland's image throughout the country is starting and it's starting to work a little bit. We're going to start working on a new budget for next year for GPI. The one negative thing is Jocelyn, who's the staff member of GPI who supports the Small Cities Consortium. She's leaving to move to North Carolina. And so we're going to have another change in staffing for the Small Cities Consortium. Initially, Monique, the Chair of, well, CEO of GPI is going to be running the meetings, but they'll look for a replacement for Jocelyn. I said my concerns about the transition and she assured me that there's going to be a transition plan, a knowledge transfer and that the Small Cities Consortium will still be as important as always for GPI. The Regatta was phenomenal. The Regatta Run, six hundred walkers and runners registered. It was an all time high for the Rotary. Was a lot of fun with the new probe. They had a new run for kids. It was a little quarter mile run through a community park and that was hysterical, little kids in their costumes and chasing after a woman on her scooter, e-scooter, she'll lead in the way. And then transitioning over to the Regatta, where I think was just as crowded as last year. Lots of cool costumes and the races were phenomenal, very well run. I just want to thank all the city staff, the parks and rec folks who are putting it together. All the city staff that were doing the hard work of lifting, you know, the pumpkins in it out of the water. It was a lot of work there yesterday, but I think it went over well. And the kids costume contest, I think was the most crowded it's ever been with lots and lots of costumes. Sherlin, myself and Jerry had a tough time picking winners. We actually had to go to like, you know, ties for second place and third place because there were so many good costumes. Just want to thank everyone for coming out. We're starting to get a little comments from folks about the congestion in town and the parking lots being full, stuff like that. And this is a new, I just want to let people know, this is kind of a new issue for us. Because the Regatta has never been this popular. I think since COVID ended, last year, we estimated thirty thousand. I have no doubt we had thirty thousand yesterday. So we'll, you know, going to have some lessons learned on how to handle things a little bit better next year. Because if these crowds keep up, I don't know where we're going to put all these people, but it's it's a good problem to have, I guess, that people are desiring to come here. And it's not just locals, obviously, if it's thirty thousand people, it's people from all over the Northwest. We know we have the the winner of the biggest pumpkin growing contest in Japan was here rowing. And a woman from France was here rowing and she won her heat. So this is definitely an international thing. Did it get on the Today Show today? It was, it didn't get on? We got to talk to people at NBC. But had a lot of fun yesterday. My legs were super sore last night, standing all day. Oh, God. But that's it for me. I just want to, I'll do it again at Council Communications, but just remind people about the Veterans Breakfast on November ninth at the Pulse Center from nine to ten thirty. Veterans are free. There's a fee for non veterans, but you do have to call the Pulse Center to make your reservation. It's usually a very crowded event, but it's a terrific free breakfast. You hear some fascinating stories from veterans. With that.
Jerry Ann was asking if you could do the appointment for a liaison for the Idea Committee?
Is that now or at the city council meeting?
You could do it at city council meeting, but it's, it's, I mean, now would.
Okay, I mean, I think the discussion was that Counsel Sacco was going to be are you willing to accept? Is anyone okay with that? Right? That was easy. All right. Anything else before we take a pause?
I believe Dale Potts is is going to also make an announcement about the Veterans Breakfast as well.
Mayor, I do, I do want to report on a did I attend the core area committee?
Forgot about you on Zoom.
Oh, no, that's okay. That's right. I was waiting for you to finish.
The tiger, the tiger behind you.
It's Brenda dead. She's not here anymore. She's in Minnesota reproducing to her population, which is great. I did go to the, I did have an actual official meeting this last two weeks. I went to the Core Area Parking Committee meeting and we just basically talked about some of the vacancies that we have for the committee. So I do encourage people and I will also encourage this when we do the interviews for the City Council Committee Meetings. We need, I think, three people and we actually would like, we had a retirement, someone who retired, Dr. Jordan. So we do have vacancies and please, if you want to, if you work within the core area, that is where Commons area is, where Wells Fargo, Cabela's, all that area, if you work within that area or you own a business in that area, please just sign up and 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 try to get in a committee like this because it is important, just like the mayor say, especially the parking. And if we are going to have a Regatta in the future, we definitely need businesses to share their thoughts, ideas. So the the area is growing and we did talk a little bit about the future of that area. So out there, if you're a business owner or works, work or live in that area in the core area, please, I encourage you to fill an application and enjoin this committee. Thank you.
Counsel Reyes. Anything else? Sorry about that again, Maria. All right, with that, we have a looks like about fourteen minutes. So go ahead and close this city council work session. We'll start back up at seven o'clock with our regular city council meeting.